Can I have folks please leave the chamber so we can start our regular meeting? Folks, can you please move out of the chamber if you're not going to stay for the meeting? We need to start the meeting, we need to close the doors. Can I have people move out if you're not staying? Thank you. On the other door, can I have people please step out of the door? Step in or out and shut the door. Good evening, everyone. Please, please find your seat and shut the door in the back. We need, we need to get this settled down and we need to get going. I will call the meeting to order. Please note the attendance. We are on the air. We have 12 signed up for open forum with one question mark of Stacy who did not call back to confirm. Is Stacy here? I guess not. So, we have 11 on the docket. We have 15 minutes and of course this goes well past the 15 minutes. I would like council's input on whether we take all, all those who signed up, that would be 11, that would be 33 minutes with the testimony if they all took three minutes.
Well, my opinion is that I'd rather let them all go than split it up.
They've waited, let them speak. I would, Mayor.
I'm really going to keep you down to three minutes this time though. I'm not going to allow leeway because we have, we have to get onto council business and if we're putting you all in the front so that you can be televised and up front. So, we will, I'm going to get my timer going here. So, the first person up, please state your name, your address, and then before you leave, there is a sign up sheet there. Now, again, those who are speaking, we do not respond, we do not clap, we do not applaud, and if you do that, I'll have to ask you to leave. So, I really need everybody to be in decorum and make sure, again, if there's new people just joined us, please turn your cell phones off. I will start with Mr. John Boyle. Will you please come forward to the open forum?
Mayor, council members, my name is John Boyle. I live at 2207 West 49th Street in Minneapolis. Moved there only because my wife fell in love with a house that sits at that particular spot. We lived in Richfield prior to that for 25 years. We raised two children here in the community. I was at one time Chair of the Human Rights Commission, served with Councilmember Garcia on that group and Commissioner Rosenberg. Our boys went to Holy Angels and had a wonderful experience there. I would like to just briefly discuss with you two factors that I think have contributed significantly to Holy Angels' present controversy. First is the importance of process, a fair and open process. You heard during the presentation during the past hour tonight from the Semper representative that they've been in serious discussions with Holy Angels Administration and with Opus Development for two years. The school first publicly announced that they were going to do this program last October. And at that time, they're scheduled to have a vote in December. That got delayed as they negotiated on their contract. Let me tell you more about the lack of process. The Holy Angels Board of Trustees, which is the school's governing body, conducts no open board meetings. They meet only behind closed doors. They do not allow their constituents to attend, observe, or speak at board meetings. They publish no agendas or minutes. And on the night school officials voted to sell the front lawn, they physically locked down the school building. Now, this may explain to you why the board's decision has caused so much division within the school community. Second, it's important to take into account what AHA officials have said about the school's need to get the city to change its comprehensive plan so commercial retail can be built on the school's front lawn. Publicly, school officials have insisted that the school does not need to sell the front lawn to survive. You heard that during the hour presentation tonight. In December, the Board of Trustees hosted a question and answer session at the school. Alumni and other school supporters who attended were required to submit their questions in writing at least 24 hours in advance. No live questions, follow-up questions, or participant comments were allowed. Board member Tim Murphy responded to two questions directly related to the school's debt and the financial condition of the school. The event was videotaped and posted on the Holy Angels website. I have a copy of that video. I would like to share with you some of Mr. Murphy's comments.
You have 30 seconds.
After he reports that the school recently refinanced its debt on favorable terms, he says, "Do we have an operating plan today that will meet the needs of the school and pay down the debt?" And we do have that exactly. This long-term debt that we've accumulated over time will be paid off in 12 years. A little later, he goes on and said, says, "The school is on firm footing. I was quoted in the paper and rightly chastised by someone in this room that I gave the impression that this school was in some sort of financial trouble. I do not, I do know, I do know that the financial state of the school is in strong hands. We have a balanced, ongoing operating budget." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Jane Koenig.
My name is Jane Koenig. I live at 6809 Wentworth. Madam Mayor and council members, I've lived in Richfield for 50 years and we were very involved in our kids when they went to St. Peter's Grade School and to Holy Angels to High School. Our five kids graduated from Holy Angels. It was a wonderful place for them and us. During the 19 years that our kids were at Holy Angels, we were very involved and served on many committees, and I served on the Board of Trustees and was chairman for a year. However, Holy Angels is proposing something that we are very much against. I think the sale of the beautiful front lawn would be detrimental to the future of our school. There are many more positive ways to raise money. When word got out about the possible sale, there was a huge reaction of alums, alumni, parents, and friends. An online petition gathered 1,343 signers who opposed the sale. 162 of those are Richfield people. A core group of volunteers calling themselves Fill the Halls decided the best way Holy Angels could help, could be helped was to contact these 1,343 to raise scholarship money for those who could not afford the tuition and increase the in current enrollment, which is now a little over 600, back to where it was a few years ago at 850. A sleeping giant was awakened. Those people would like to help the students, but they don't want to buy plastic brass or umbrella tables. No one in the school has done much asking for money. Our five kids who graduated from Holy Angels have an accumulation of 155 years that they've been out, and only one child was asked one time to make a donation. Most of their friends haven't been asked either. The 22, 22 of the Sisters of St. Joseph sent a letter to the board expressing their disagreement on the sale of this beautiful place that they built and cared for, for 80 years. Because Fill the Halls was united a presentation before the Board of Trustees, they went to the Richfield citizens. For months, we've been talking to Richfield folks about this potential sale. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of 1,112 Richfield people who signed these petitions opposing the sale of the front lawn. This sale will destroy one of the most beautiful spots in our city, and it was voted by 14 people who do not live here. They will be gone, and our residents will be left with traffic conditions, disruptions in our neighborhood, and one more strip mall. Of the signers, 180 are parishioners at St. Peter's, and they're concerned about the traffic in our parking lot and the hidden dangers that could come to our parish and parish and Blessed Trinity School.
Time. I need you to stop, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to present you with the petitions of 1,112 people.
Please take it over to staff, we will accept that. Thank you. Rosalda Murray. Thank you.
My name is Rosalba Murray, and I live on 7301 Pillsbury Avenue South. Madam Mayor and Member of the City Council. I taught Spanish at Holy Angels for 34 years, and I am still substitute teaching whenever I have the opportunity. I consider Holy Angels to be my second home. My husband Phil and I have lived in Richfield for 40 years. Both of our daughters have graduated from Holy Angels. As much as I would like for Holy Angels East Lawn to stay pristine and untouched like it is now, I believe that something has to be done for the financial survival of the school. There are huge issues with shrinking enrollment and ever-increasing costs. I want Holy Angels to stay open on a stronger financial footing for many future generations, and I believe that the best way that that would happen is if Holy Angels sells part of the front lawn. Holy Angels is an excellent school, and I would like it to continue to grow and thrive. I do not think that the commercial development of small parts of East Lawn will ruin the view of the campus, but in fact, the overall impact of improvements will be very positive. I think that the development of the East Lawn will help Holy Angels great, no, help Holy Angels get stronger financially. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Rogie.
He says no.
Nope, he says no. Okay. Steve Volpatic.
Madam Mayor, City Council Members. My name's Stephen Volpatic. I live at 6620 Stevens Avenue. I'm a nine-year employee of Holy Angels. I recently retired. And while I could stand here and sing the praises of the institution, as you've heard enough of tonight, I take a slightly more pragmatic view. As a faculty member, I served for the last three years on the AHA Finance Committee. I am acutely aware of the financial needs of the institution. As Ms. Murray just so eloquently said, "It's pristine, it's pretty." Because I live so close and because I walk to work every day, I definitely realize what we're talking about in terms of aesthetics. Up hard against that is the financial picture. As the chairperson of the Science Department at Holy Angels, for the past seven years, I watched my budget shrink, and as my budget shrank, capable of doing less and less for the students. On another hand, I want to talk a little bit about impact. I live close to Holy Angels. As I said, I walked to school every day for nine years. I'm aware of the traffic, I'm aware of a lot of things. I'm about the youngest person that lives on my block. I know most of the people, most of the people on my block buy their prescription medicines at Walgreens. I think it would be very, very handy for these people and myself, because God knows I'm not getting any younger either, to be able to walk over there and pick up my prescription. I think that that would be a good thing. Another thing I think would be good is I'd like to walk over there with my wife and have a coffee at the coffee shop. That is one of the proposed uses. I think that would be good, too. In terms of fouling up the traffic or, you know, all these horrible things, I, I don't, I don't see that. My wife's a realtor. She works out of the Parkway office of Coldwell Banker Burnett. I said, "Carol, do you really think that this is going to have a negative impact on the property value of our home?", which of course is a consideration of many people.
30 seconds.
I don't believe it will. Last but not least, I've got a grandson. He's 11 months old. 14 years from now, I want him to get the type of education at Holy Angels that we are currently and will be in the future able to provide if the retail development of the front lawn is permitted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kristin Iow.
Madam Mayor and City Council Members, my name is Kristin Iow, and my husband and I have lived in Richfield for 34 years. The youngest of our five children just graduated from Holy Angels this year. I've been on the staff for 12 years as the assistant to the principal. As both a parent and a staff member, I know the pressure on both families and the school that comes from costs always going up, while many families have seen their incomes stagnate or even go down. This year, Holy Angels cut staff members for financial reasons for the first time since I've worked at AHA, in a year when our annual fund drive was extremely successful. There is a very real human cost to AHA's lack of an endowment and burden of debt. This human cost far outweighs the loss of property on the East Lawn. I believe that the Academy of Holy Angels is a shining star in and for our community. Richfield can proudly say that it has a variety of public school options that have adapted and changed to meet residents' needs, and also offers strong faith-based schools such as Blessed Trinity and Academy of Holy Angels. Right now, Richfield has it all in school options that will attract and keep family. To that purpose, a financially sound, resilient, and stable Holy Angels is in the city's best interests. As you've heard tonight, AHA has challenges regarding debt, a lack of an endowment, and an inability to help students financially to the level needed. Our faith teaches that we cannot serve and give access only to the wealthy or comfortable. That can't be who we are as a Catholic institution. We have a moral imperative to open our doors as much as possible to those who wish to enter. Our staff and faculty are remarkably cohesive on this land sale opportunity, even though we love our spacious grounds, because we recognize every day that the cause to which we are called is at risk. AHA received an offer to sell an underutilized part of our East Lawn for $6 million. We found that the developer would work with us on aesthetic concerns and the type of permanent business restrictions a Catholic high school requires. We consulted with our bishop and chaplain who serve on our board. Considering the needs of our current and future students, this sale will serve the greater good and our true mission, educating students who seek a faith-based college preparatory education. Richfield is Holy Angels' home, and I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. We want to serve all of our families, including those in our own neighborhood, to the best of our ability. Richfield is the unique, is in a unique position to understand what we are facing, as the city has found inspiring ways to adapt, grow, and welcome new people. I respectfully ask that when that time comes, you consider approving the rezoning necessary for AHA to begin decisively resolving its own challenges, and to continue to be a source of goodness and cooperation with the city of Richfield, and I thank you very much for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Ann Garland. There's a couple of seats up front if folks want to move up here.
Hello. I'm Ann Garland, and I'm happy to be here, Ms. Mayor, and council members and staff. This discussion that you're about to hear and make amongst yourselves over the next six months or whatever it takes is a game changer, and I think that the severity and the importance of your decision shouldn't be overlooked. And it feels, I was concerned, but it feels as though you understand how important this is, and I plead with you to consider what's at stake. I'm a Richfield resident. I live at 500 East 67th Street. I'm the parent of alums, and I work at St. Peter's and Blessed Trinity, which is the Catholic grade school right next to Holy Angels. I am their financial administrator. As part of my work as financial administrator, I'm, I'm immersed in the financial impacts of decisions. St. Peter's and Blessed Trinity have a special relationship with Holy Angels. We use each other's assets, we share the same values, and the same vibrant faith. At St. Peter's and Blessed Trinity, we know we'd be less if Holy Angels fails. And I think Holy Angels representatives tonight are being remarkably candid in a public setting discussing their financial footing, and I think that you should appreciate their candidness, candidness, and realize what they're saying. The demographics in Richfield are changing, as they are in our schools and in our city. I work with people on a daily basis that cannot afford Blessed Trinity and cannot afford Holy Angels without extreme aid. We want, we want those kids culturally Catholic to be able to go to Holy Angels, and it breaks our hearts knowing the sacrifices that these families are making in order to have their kids in a Catholic school that would make a life-changing difference in their worlds. We're not afraid of our neighbors, we're not afraid of Holy Angels, nor what might come to the property. We feel that the traffic pattern that was described tonight might ease the way that corner looks. The city of Richfield has always worked really well with us with regard to that traffic area.
30 seconds.
And now, I firmly believe that most of the people in this room want the Holy, the Academy of Holy Angels to succeed and flourish. So, the question is, will the land sale help? Will it make a difference? To me, there is no doubt that looking at the plans for the future, money, a lot of it is necessary. I urge the City Council and all those who care and want to make a difference to step up and support the AHA vision determined by its trustees and help not hinder their success. In my opinion, a public fight, a Catholic fight, doesn't encourage donors. Thank you.
Time. Jesse Foley.
Members of the Richfield City Council, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I came today to express my strong support for the, for this land sale.
Your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jesse Foley, 67th and Pillsbury. Came to express my strong support for this project. My wife, Annie, and our six kids live in Richfield. We're both Holy Angels alum. We attend church at St. Peter's. Our kids go to Blessed Trinity. And I've worked as the Director of Admission at Holy Angels for the last 17 years, so I'm well aware of the enrollment challenges that we have. As been made clear on a number of occasions here tonight, there's no question that a strong and growing and vibrant Holy Angels is good for the city of Richfield. I also think, as was mentioned a moment ago, school choice here in Richfield is very, very important. We have a good forward-thinking and excellent public high school and a very excellent award-winning Catholic high school as well. Many private high schools in the, in the Twin Cities area and also across the country are kind of experiencing a lot of the same enrollment challenges as what we are. The one thing that the schools that are thriving and growing have, the thing that they have in common is they have minimal debt and adequate endowment, and that is something that we desperately need. This transaction changes that immediately and allows us to provide greater access for students, and also a much more compelling and strong vision for our donors. And I think that's something that has not been said tonight, is that if we've got a strong vision and a plan, those donors are going to receive our plan in a much different way. Just like Pam Kerber stated a few moments ago, as an alumni, as a Richfield resident, I had misgivings about this plan to start, but it really truly is about the who and not the what. It's about students, it's about the experience and the transformation that happens with those students during the four years that they're there. In conclusion, at the heart of our mission is to educate and, and to educate a diverse student population. That is not easy, that is not inexpensive to do, and yet, it's the right thing to do. And long, long, long ago, we decided to do that in Richfield. We aren't asking for funds or taxes, we're just asking for your support so that we can make a sacrifice that we feel prepared to make for the betterment of our current and future students. Please support AHA, a great partner since 1931, so we can secure a future here in Richfield. Thank you.
Thank you. John Arms.
Hi, my name is John Arms. I live on 105 Homewood in Minneapolis, just across the Richfield border. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm a graduate of Holy Angels, 1986. There were five Arms boys who came through the school in the, in the 80s. I have three aunts in the 40s and 50s, I have a son and another son on his way, and more coming, and cousins that have gone through there, so I'm very familiar with the Holy Angels experience. In this hand, I thought I'd grab this. This is a Ziploc bag full of grass from the Holy Angels lawn, and, and that's important and it's good for memories. In this hand, I have my son's report card, and I'm bringing these out because this is one of hundreds of report cards that the faculty have seen today and the students earn that come out of Holy Angels all the time. And I had to look at myself and think, what, what is more important? What are we deciding on? And it occurred to me that this is not just about the grades, it's about the promise that it holds. My son doesn't want you to see the grades, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to show them, but they're good, they're good. But it's, it's a promise they hold, the promise that my son is, he's got a, and so many like him have a place that teaches, you know, spiritual guidance, service, leadership, achievement. These are wonderful, wonderful things, and I hold them up against these two, and I think this is what we're there for. And Holy Angels is a place where everyone matters, and they know it. Holy Angels is a place that, that even in the hardest of times, for, since my aunts were there in the 40s to now, reaches deep into its own pockets, even when they're mostly empty, to make Holy Angels available to kids who just couldn't do it without scholarship. And they do that out of the goodness of their heart, and that's the kind of neighborhood I would want. So, these, and of course, these are gifted kids from all walks of life, and Holy Angels makes it possible for them. So, while I value the grass that I tread in the 80s, and that my families did in the 40s and the 50s and the 2000s, it isn't what it's about. It's about the grades and what they represent. So, when this decision does come before you and you do have to make your conclusions, I do ask that you vote in support of that. It's not about the grass, it's about the grades, it's about the kids. I don't envy your task, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jeff Ogden.
Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Jeff Ogden, and I live at 5200 Belmont Avenue South, that little suburb of Richfield just to the north. So, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight in favor of the proposal here, the proposed transaction. I am a past Chair of the Board of Trustees of the Academy of Holy Angels. I was a Chair for two years. I was on the Finance Committee for five years prior to that. I was Chair of the Finance Committee for three years. In my experience as a member of the Board, I am not aware of anybody that came on the Board with the intention of coming on to either sell the land, any part of the land, or to turn green space into concrete. I know that through three years of study of this issue, that it's been painful for every member of the Board. No one made the vote with a lot of self-searching thought and a lot of pain. But the Board, through a long process, took a look at the long-term viability of the institution and the long-term desire to be a contributing part of the city, city of Richfield, to which it's been a valued member for so many years, and made the decision this was the best step to maintain the competitive position of the institution. We are at a significant disadvantage to our peer organization, and although we are not in financial stress that's going to be apparent today, we need to be stronger in the long term. This will be a positive step for the institution. We think this will be a positive step overall for the city of Richfield, and I'm in support of the proposed transaction. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Rorke.
Good evening. I'm Joan Rorke. I live at 4725 Elliott in Minneapolis, and I'm a 1965 alumni of the Academy of the Holy Angels, and I thank you for the opportunity tonight to speak in, in support of this development project. Yeah, 1965 was a long time ago. As we've heard tonight, it was an all-girls As we've heard tonight, it was an all-girls school at the time. My two younger sisters graduated from Holy Angels, and in 1974, my younger brother was the first male graduate at Holy Angels Academy. And I remember those days, there was a lot of stress, there were a lot of unhappy people, and I could only really describe it as gnashing and gnawing of teeth. Many alumni were so opposed to having boys at the school. Boys at the school, this is not a boy and girl school, this is a girl's school. And many people envisioned sending their daughters and granddaughters there so that the experience would be exactly the same as it was when they had it. They remembered all the great things that we did and thought having boys there was going to really have a poor impact on that. I really admire the board and the administrators at that time because they made a very difficult decision in the best interest of the future of the school. And the reason I'm telling you all this tonight is because I had many friends that also attended all-girls schools in Minneapolis and St. Paul, and some of those schools decided to not go with the plan of allowing boys at that school, and those schools are not in existence today. So in conclusion, I just want to say tonight that I hope that when it's time to make the decision, that you will support this development project so that the Academy of the Holy Angels can be a very vibrant part of the city of Richfield for many decades to come. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Fred Rogie.
Mayor, council members, originally I was gonna, I had a speech I was gonna say, and then I decided I was just gonna wait because, and not speak tonight, but I think we're missing part of the most important thing. We've heard great stories about the school, we've heard people who are for or against this project now, we heard about the petitions, and as council members, I hope, I'd like to remind you that we know that a lot of times people sign petitions and they don't have a clue what the real facts of a petition are, and that's important. Okay?
No, no, no.
So, the reason I came up here is I want to put this in perspective, that this is a, the school is a business, the business that they're in is educating students. And we have a business called Walgreens who wants to go across the street into a brand-new building. I would hope that we start concentrating on what's going on here. It's a private land being sold to a private developer who's going to do something that's legal and benefits Richfield, the city, Richfield, the school system, Holy Angels, the school system, and Hennepin County. That's the important part here, is it's a legal entity doing a legal project. And I have a son-in-law whose mother graduated from Holy Angels, my son graduated from Holy Angels, my grandson graduated from Holy Angels, I dated girls from Holy Angels in the sixties, and you're not one of them. But I've been so close to Holy Angels for so long, and I've worked there since 1984. And, and I love Richfield. I'm in my, now that I'm at 6600 Lindell Avenue, by the way, Citi Bella, I'm in my fifth housing in Richfield, four homes and one condo. So I care about Richfield. I was on the city council, and I think the four of you at least that I worked with on the council understand that I always look at both sides of this story. I try to come to a council meeting as prepared, that was important to me. And at first, when I heard about this project, I didn't understand that the sisters would, you know, that they would go crazy when they heard about this. And then I found out that the land had been sold and the school had been sold, and that created debt. And I knew about the dome and remortgaging the dome to get lower interest rates, and I knew that we had to build a convocation center and classrooms. That's where the debt came from. It didn't come from bad decisions of the board. And I hope as council members, you will remember that the board has made a decision. As much as you want the residents to back you when you make decisions, remember that the board has made a decision, and they think this is in the best interest of the school. And I think that's the part that's the most important. It's a legal operation here, and the school will benefit for years to come. It's one leg of a three-legged stool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes the open forum, but I do want to say that it's really important that people come forward, and I really appreciate the fact that so many people came forward to speak tonight. And again, you can sign up for an open forum yourself to come at other council meetings if you'd like to discuss an issue that is not on the agenda. So thank you for those of you who are here for that. I'd like everybody to stand and join us in the pledge allegiance before you walk out the door.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think it's important that we remember this was one nation under God, all of us, as we go through this process. Thank you. Please quickly and quietly, if you're leaving, quickly and quietly, we have business to conduct. Please quickly move out of the chamber if you're not staying here, please move out of the chamber, we need to continue business. Thank you for coming. Please continue to move out the door. Please shut the door behind when you leave. Thank you. At this time, I would ask for the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of July 8th, 2014, the special city council work session of July 8th, and the regular city council meeting of July 8th, 2014, and the special concurrent city council and transportation commission work session of July 9th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a presentation tonight, and thank you for being so patient. Susan, we're so glad you're here with Veep. This is volunteers enlisted to assist people, and would you please step up to the mic?
Thank you, Mayor. Veep began in Richfield in 1973 by a group of Richfield residents who felt it was important that they reach out to their neighbors. They were seeing an increasing amount of isolated seniors and families struggling in the community. It was important to them to reach out and make an immediate impact in these people's lives. It was started by residents through their community congregations, thirteen of them. They served Richfield and a small portion of South Minneapolis. Their original programs were mainly food for struggling families and transportation for seniors. I thank, first of all, the city of Richfield for being a part of this program and supporting it, and an integral part for over forty years. We're celebrating our forty-first anniversary this year, and we have some many changes. What I want to do tonight with, to the council, I think we have some things to give each council member, is just to give you a quick overview of those we're serving in Richfield, tell you a little bit about who they are and what our updates are. And I don't know where... Am I allowed to change that?
Thank you. Yes.
I can do it?
I believe you can. Jim is helping you, right behind you there.
Thank you, that's it. I have many talents, technology is not one of them. Fortunately, a lot of people do. These are some statistics from the American Community Survey, which is a part of the census tract. And in 2013, Richfield had a population of a little over thirty-five thousand people. And of that, thirty-five percent are living below, two-hundred percent of poverty. Two-hundred percent of poverty in America today is a family of four living at forty-four thousand dollars or less. Poverty in America today is obviously a family of four living at twenty-two thousand dollars or less. Richfield has a little over twelve thousand individuals in the community living at that level. In 2003, Veep was able to serve a little over fifty-five hundred of those individuals. That's only forty-four percent of the population, so obviously, one of our challenges in the future is to do more outreach, to reach more of them as we go forward. A little bit about the people that we serve in Bloomington or in the Richfield. As you can see, the majority are children, at forty-five percent. Also, twenty-three percent are two-parent families. Now, these are low percentages, but because they're spread all over, so there's no one profile of an individual who needs our services. Individuals who need our services have a gap in income. Veep is about economics and economic stability. Our goal is to reach people experiencing a crisis through financial gap and to help them regain or maintain stability. Twenty-six percent work part-time and twenty-five percent work full-time, so over half of those individuals do work. Richfield, Bloomington, Edina, South Minneapolis, the communities that Veep serves, make up the largest hospitality region in the state of Minnesota. We can thank the Mall of America and many other retail for that. The majority of the jobs that we are seeing are in the service industry. This area also makes up the largest area of working poor in the state of Minnesota. That is who our clients are. Our goal is to help them gain or maintain economic stability. Our goal is to prevent homelessness and food insecurity, and also to connect clients with the needed services. We're able to do that through the help of the entire community. We're very fortunate to have a tremendous amount of support in our community. In Richfield, more than a hundred volunteers, plus businesses, schools, congregations, and organizations gave over six thousand hours through Veep last year. More than five hundred donors and groups from Richfield, which represented residents, businesses, organizations, congregations, schools, foundations, and the city itself, donated more than two hundred thousand dollars. Our supporters represent the entire community, making Veep a truly community-based organization. This slide that I have up now is in our annual report that we put out there. It shows that in 2013, we received revenues of a little over three million dollars, that's donated dollars. We received donated goods, which is food, toys, school supplies, representing more than four million dollars, and the value of the volunteer services represents over one-point-four million, for a total value of our program in the community of eight-point-nine million dollars. And we do that with a little over three million. So we do give back, we are pretty efficient. In Richfield, two-point-four million dollars were valued at the services, the volunteers, and the goods that we provided to this community. We've been doing what we think is a great job for forty years, but by 2008, we realized we were the largest food shelf in the state of Minnesota, and that people were needing more than we were able to give. We needed to look deeper to see what else was going on, and we needed to reach out and collaborate more. In 2010, we had the opportunity to find a building that would help suit our needs. We were out of space, our clients were waiting sometimes up to two weeks to use our food shelf. That is not how you feed hungry people. At the same time, we began to talk to Hennepin County, who had just created a new service department of all their human services, called Human Services and Public Health Department. At the same time, Hennepin County realized that over half of the low-income population no longer lived in Minneapolis, they live in the suburbs. And Richfield and Bloomington is the fourth-largest low-income population in this area. They approached Veep and asked us to collaborate with them. Veep took a leap of faith and decided to buy a new building. Many like you who buy a home and then pay it off, Veep took this leap of faith because we needed to feed people today, we needed to take a look at what was going on in their life, and we needed to collaborate with our partners in the community. We moved in our building in January of this year, I might say, on the coldest day in twenty years, followed by the biggest snow in twenty years. So it was a very challenging winter, but within two weeks of moving, Veep cut the wait times for a family needing food from ten days down to one day and same-day service. That was an immediate. Hennepin County moved in, they are our tenants, and they are working with our social workers and our staff to help people do a syncing program as they need help. Hennepin County has six other hubs, four or five other hub sites in the state, in the county. This is the only hub site that is completely synced. When an individual from Richfield needs help, they will walk into that lobby, they will walk up to one desk, and they will speak to one person. And they will get help from Veep or Hennepin County as they need it. We've increased our programs, we've also added programs. The importance of increasing our programs is to look at deeper needs. What is the need going on in the family? We're creating deeper assessments, we're measuring our outcomes. We are creating programs with access to healthy foods. We're starting to see that it's not just about food, it's about health. And so we have one of the only commercial kitchens in all of Minnesota in a food shelf, and that's with over three hundred food shelves in the state. We're cutting edge, we're doing things we never thought we would do. We took our giant leap of faith, and we are working on a five-million-dollar campaign to pay that off, so that we can pour that money back into programs and grow our programs. Richfield has been with Veep since the beginning, and we look to you to be with us as we move forward. We need your help, we need your support, and we need your gifts. And I'm so thrilled that Mayor Gutell asked me to come and make this presentation, we're doing it in Richfield. This will also be televised on our website. I am inviting all elected officials to Veep for tours in September, and Debbie Gutell will be helping us host that. So we look forward to it. For the rest of you, please find our website and sign up, there's a volunteer job for anybody and everybody, and there's plenty to do in our community, and we hope you'll join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. It's great. It's great to see your success. I love the new place. I've been through it, if you haven't gone, you have to go. And the day I was there, they'd just got done making banana bread or zucchini bread, one of them. You'd gotten a whole load and they were going, oh, the bananas were going to go bad. And you guys had made fresh banana bread, it smelled wonderful in the office. Really appreciate that. Next agenda item is the council discussion, and I believe we have a couple of items, and I'm starting with Councilmember Sandal. I'm sorry, Garcia, you have to wait.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay, I just wanted to say hats off to the great organization that sponsored our Richfield garden tour that was held last week on July 12th, two weeks, last week. And Susan Rosenberg is in the office, and she's certainly been instrumental in carrying that on. I managed, in spite of the rain and in spite of the fact that I didn't start till 3:30, to get to all eight of the sites, and they were really remarkable and really fun to see, and they were all so different, it was really unique. I only took pictures at two of the sites, I'm sorry I didn't do more, but I'll just give you an idea of what interesting things people had in their yards, and encourage people in the future to go and check out the tour, because it really is worth seeing. This was one of my favorites, and it doesn't get the full effect. What it was is a structure that was built in a backyard, and the two lanterns... And the two lanterns are solar lanterns, so they glow orange in the night. And they hung from the frames that look like windows. It was really very unique. And this is such a lovely place. It made me want to sit down and have my morning coffee and rolls out on the veranda. This was a totally different type of yard, and I'm not sure what you'd call it, but really entertaining and delightful to see. And colorful. Really amazing, all of the things people had. This was fun. They had a huge display all along the fence line. And here's a close-up of what they had done. And this was my very most favorite of all. This was built by the neighbor next door. We had a dinosaur in the backyard.
That's great.
And this was like five feet tall, I think. It was a good-sized dinosaur. And it's made from wrenches, as you can see. These are wrenches. And I saw this when I was out doorknocking, which must have been four years ago, in the backyard. It was looking over the neighbor's fence. And the gentleman who did it is no longer in his home, but he did want to preserve his dinosaur, so the next-door neighbor bought it and incorporated it in her garden, and she's storing it for him. But it was just delightful. And then, if you're not careful, he's gonna attack. There he is. So this was just a really great, fun event. I would encourage anyone who goes next year to pay attention. And if you have a garden that's worth seeing, by all means, you should contact Susan Rosenberg and the Garden Club, who do a lot of the work to get this organized. And thanks and hats off to those great workers. Thank you, Susan Rosenberg.
Councilmember Elliott, I believe you have an item.
I don't have much. I do want to thank the city staff, Pam Dimitranko in particular, and Lucas, I believe, is the tech guy. I was out of town on July eighth, and we had what I think was a fairly important meeting regarding Sixty-Sixth Street and the upcoming project. And Pam was able to facilitate my being out of town by setting up a come-to-meeting, and I participated. And I think, you know, I don't think any of us like to miss meetings, but it's nice to know that we've got the facilities and the ability to bring us into the meeting, and we can participate and have our say and do what we were elected to do, and that's debate some issues and talk about them and be there, even if we can't be there physically. We're there certainly in spirit, and in my case, often loudly.
Well, you always have something to say.
Right.
Councilmember Fitz Henry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What I want to talk about is Urban Wildland Marathon coming up. It's coming up Saturday, August second, two thousand and fourteen. And for those that want to go to the website, it's actually urbanwildland.com. We still have openings for both the five and the longer race, the full half marathon, but you have to register before the day of the race. So don't try to show up the day of the race and say, okay, I want to put my money down and do it. You can do that online. And again, it's August second, and it starts at our ice arena. And those that haven't seen it, it goes through most of Richfield. So if you're available in the morning to watch them, cheer them on, because it's a great event.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Well, I just wanted to continue what I was saying about Academy of Holy Angels. One of the things that's extremely important is that, you know, this is a very significant, would be a significant change to our comprehensive plan, and it would require a lot of scrutiny. And I hope that next time that we do have a meeting, that we have a plan before us and that we focus on talking and discussing that plan and that we have folks that come up and offer some ideas as to what we should consider, how we should maybe look at things. And instead of just, you know, doing a lot of antis or pros, we want it, hopefully, we would have some discussion of substance, and there would be some fairness to the issue and to the process. We need to all come to the table. And there's been a lot of divisiveness. I think there's been a lot of misinformation. And I think if Holy Angels wants to sell, and I'm not talking about S-A-L-E, but, you know, in that regard, but if they want to sell this proposal, then they ought to be part of bringing others to the table and talking to them. And oftentimes, you know, we get criticized, and that's fine. That's the way it should be. But we need to work together at the table. And we need to not feel like we're not getting heard. And that's what I meant when I was talking about, you know, running the clock. You know, let's allow the opposition, you know, to put their two cents' worth in. But let's do it again in a very focused and measured and productive way. And that's what I have got to say. And I appreciate, I think, all the folks that came out, and they're really people that care about their community, and naturally, we do too.
Yes. And I just want to mention that the farmer's market, of course, is going, and it is fabulous down there right now. Things are starting to come in. I know it's a late season. Strawberries are still there. And so I encourage you to get out and enjoy your community and get down to the farmer's market this year and see all the wonderful produce and everything we have on a more lighter note. But I do appreciate everybody coming in.
Well, they've got great zucchini muffins, too.
I met Councilmember Garcia down there. We had a wonderful visit while we were down there, visited with a lot of residents down there. So you see me down there quite often. Go ahead.
I had one other comment. The one plus is that we had a very packed audience to hear about the Holy Angels' proposal. And we still have people out in the outer lobby still talking. So I think maybe they have come together, at least to talk some more, so that's a good sign.
Yeah, that always is.
That's an hour later.
I'd like to add to that. They were so respectful tonight. I want to thank everybody in the crowd.
Yes.
We've had issues before where people have talked, actually, where other people are talking or cheering and booing, and I want to really say hats off to everybody who's here. We didn't hear them comments tonight, so thank you for being the citizens of Richfield Yar and the decent people to come to this meeting.
Yeah, exactly. That's wonderful. I'd ask council approval of the agenda.
Some would.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Motion carries. We have the consent calendar. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The consent calendar, for those in the audience, contains several separate items, which are acted upon and considered by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, all the individual items will have been approved as well, and no further council action on those items would be necessary. Tonight, we have several items on the consent calendar, and we start with number, or letterie, I should say. Consideration of the approval of a temporary on-sale three-point-two-percent malt liquor license for the Church of the Assumption at three oh five East Seventy-seventh Street for their annual Fun Fiesta, which occurs on August seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen. Item B is consideration of the approval of resolution authorizing the City of Richfield Police Department to renew the cooperative agreement to continue membership in the Hennepin County Violent Offender Task Force. Item C is consideration of the approval of setting a public hearing on August twenty-sixth, two thousand and fourteen, regarding the issuance of a new on-sale wine and three-point-two-percent malt liquor licenses for Henry Two, doing business as Red Pepper Chinese Restaurant at twenty-nine-ten West Sixty-Sixth Street. Item D is consideration of the approval of the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant from the state of Minnesota to the City of Richfield for the grant period of July first, two thousand and fourteen, through June fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Item E is consideration of the approval of an amended agreement with the City of Bloomington for food inspection services for Richfield for two thousand and fourteen. Item F is consideration of the approval of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Church of Saint Peter at sixty-seven-thirty Nicollet Avenue for their annual pig roast event, to be held on August sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Item G is consideration of the approval of the First Amendment to the Purchase Agreement, dated November second, two thousand and eleven, by and between the City of Richfield and Lyndale Station LLC. And finally, item H, which is consideration of the approval of the Vid Minutes Tabulation and Award of Contract, Park Construction Company, to repave the Woodlake Nature Center parking lot in the sum of one hundred and four thousand and four hundred dollars, and to authorize the Recreation Director to approve additional contract work, provided it does not exceed fifty thousand dollars. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
I'll move the calendar.
Second.
I'm really glad to see us paving the parking lot over there. It really needs it.
It is, yeah. It's well beyond when it needed to be paved.
And I don't know who arranged that the Fun Festival is one day and the Pig Roast a next, so I don't have to cook, but I'm enjoying that. We can do that again. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Councilmember Garcia, I believe you have the next item.
Okay, this item is a public hearing for the consideration of the issuance of new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses with the optional two a.m. closing for Last Call Operating Company, doing business at Champs Americana, which is at seven ninety West Sixty-Sixth Street. On April the twenty-first, two thousand and fourteen, the city received application materials for new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor license, as I mentioned, with the two a.m. closing. Last Call Operating Company recently acquired Fox and Hound, Champs, and Bailey Sports Grill restaurant chains from bankruptcy. Effective March the twelfth, two thousand and fourteen, Jim Selkey is the sole officer of the company with the titles Chief Financial Officer, Vice President, Treasurer, and Secretary. Scott Larson will continue his role as general manager under the new ownership. Now, all the required information and documents, as required by the city and by public safety, have been received and have gone through the background investigation. And all of that has been completed, and the results of the investigation are summarized. And the acting Public Safety Director, Jay Henthorn, has reviewed the background investigation and reports that there really is, there's no cause to deny, you know, this license. So they are recommending that we have a public hearing, and we hear from folks before we vote on this motion.
Okay, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone who would like to come forward to speak on this?
Maybe Mr. Larson is here.
Mr. Larson, are you here? Would you like to come forward and just say hello? That's always good. It's good to see you again.
Hi, my name is Scott Larson. I've been the general manager of Champs Last Call since December of two thousand and twelve. So I try to do everything right, make sure all my servers get their licenses, and go from there.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you for coming tonight.
Good food.
Mm-hmm, yeah. This is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to come forward to speak? Anyone to the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing is closed. Councilmember?
So I will move that we approve the issuance of new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses with the optional two a.m. closing for Last Call Operating Company, doing business as Champs Americana, seven ninety West Sixty-Sixth Street.
Second. Any other discussion, council? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item seven is, let me move down to it, is consideration of an award of a contract to Midwest Playscapes, Inc., to replace the play equipment in Veterans Memorial Park in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And do we have some presentation here at all, show some of the equipment?
Madam Mayor, members of the city council and the audience, my name is Jim Toppitt. So far, I'm the Recreation Services Director. And it's good to bring this project forward to you tonight. It's been long overdue. The play equipment at Veterans Park is over twenty years old. It's needed of replacement. We have a problem to fix there. We had some upheaving of the existing equipment due to the lack of drainage of water in the container. So we're taking the opportunity to fix that as well and replace the equipment. As you know, Veterans Park is our premier community park. And so the play structure there is, there's a lot more to it. It's a lot more extensive than the typical structure we'd put in a neighborhood park. And so it's a destination park. You see kids there all the time. You see groups of kids there all the time. If you go there in the summer, often you'll see it full of children. And so we're excited about replacing this equipment. We're planning to do it at a time where kids are back in school. So we'd like you to consider this contract tonight, so we can install the equipment after Labor Day and get it installed before the winter. So we went through a public process to get feedback from, especially people that use the park. We visited the park on occasion and talked with parents, that sort of thing, and kids. But we used the city's Richfield Connect to really get some concrete ideas before we called for proposals and designs. And then after we scored them and picked out the top two, we got feedback on the top two. So the Community Services Commission is recommending the structure that I'll present to you right now. Let me just give you a site plan here first. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is quite a large area, and if you see my cursor here, there's a number of features that will stand out right away. And the big area here is designed for kids five and up. And you see a traditional, you know, structure with ramps, with elevated experiences. And it's all surrounded by, in fact, the entire play equipment is surrounded by wood fiber. That's the resilient surface that gives when you fall on it. And that wood fiber is accessible to wheelchair, as opposed to the sand that's out there now. And so this design, as well as the other five designs that we received, all meet ADA, current ADA requirements. Next to here, one of the first things that you'll see as you're walking to the park in this area right here on the south side is an eighty-foot zip line. And I'll show you a video of that that I think you'll enjoy. And that was, and then there's a rope-climbing structure in the middle of it that stands twenty-six feet tall. That you'll see from the parking lot, and you'll see it full of kids. There's twelve swings in this design. A number of other things, a spin around that'll show you. But this area here to the north is separated, and that's designed for kids two to five. We like to keep that separate so that the young, young toddlers are not really in the same place that maybe a twelve-year-old would be playing and maybe intimidated. So I'll show you some specifics of that structure for and design for this area is something called the Cozy Cocoon.
Oh, look at that.
See that? That's the, there it is. Two to five, yeah. Yeah, we're talking two to five, right. So this is the toddler area. I'm gonna show you a number of other things involved. This is the actual structure for that toddler age. You see, it's just different than your normal play equipment that you'd see for older children and all in the same spot. Good to actually see children playing on the equipment, so you kind of understand play value as opposed to seeing it on a two-D plan. Kind of hard to... Okay, so let's take a look at this zip line that...
Wow.
Now, that's eighty feet long.
Oh, my.
It'd be fun to be there to see the first person that does that.
Oh, yeah.
It'd actually be fun to be the first person that does that. I think there'll be lines of kids for this all, all day long.
How do they get back up to the top, then?
So...
Physically, you just push them back?
So it goes eighty feet from an elevated ramp to the other side, and then you have to tow it back to the elevated ramp. So again, you're getting a lot of activity, and it's designed, you know, to give you a workout or some, you know, physical fitness. or some, you know, physical fitness benefit. Looks fun.
Yes, it does.
Okay, and a couple of other things. This is a climber. That's part of the design. Again, you wouldn't see a two- to five-year-old on this. Designed for kids five and up. I think this zip line will appeal to even teenagers.
Oh, yeah.
And I'll go to the spinning around. This is really fun. I'm told this is, will be one of the most attractive. Like a merry-go-round that you can sit on or run on and dance on. That guy's gonna be a good dancer. There they go. Oh, there they go. Okay. Here's the, a look at what this rope climber is like, and it accommodates a lot of kids at once. And that's what you're gonna see from the parking lot at Vets. In our RFP, was it a real live boulder that, that you can climb on? It's just simple fun. And another feature that was recommended by the public was to have adult play equipment. And so there's a, there's three pieces of equipment that, as a parent, instead of sitting on a bench, if you choose, you can actually do some aerobic exercise as your children are playing and exercising as well. I'm gonna take it back to here and introduce Matt Finnegan. Matt is our, the, the person that put this design together. He's from Midwest Playscapes. And if you've got any detailed questions, Matt's here, or I don't know if you've got any comments to make on the design.
Madam Mayor, council, audience, thank you for this opportunity to highlight the playground area for Vets Park. As Jim said, Vets Park is the largest park in Richfield. In Richfield, and it's, also has one of the largest shelters or pavilions for families to get together, barbecues, and so it's a highly-used area. And when I met with Jim and his team a few months back, Jim really wanted to be able to create an area that had unique play components. But he also wanted to have a centerpiece that kids would really look forward to, and they'd want to come back to. They wanted, he wanted the experience, we wanted the experience, so that when they turn into the parking lot and they look down at the park, they see a giant climbing space net. So that's kind of how we based our centerpiece. Jim kind of talked about that a little bit. That's the, the 26-foot climbing net that's in the center of the area. It's full of shapes, cells, and perching areas. It's great for all kids, and mom and dad can get on it as well. Right to the right of that is the, the 80-foot track ride. We did the track ride at an angle for a reason, so they can get speed up when they're going back. But then we wanted to create a cooperation play where their buddies could help them drag it back, and then someone else would take another turn and go. The climbing rock is, again, something kind of unique. It's full of handholds and footholds. It's something that's about 84 inches high. And kids can, beginners can be on it, or people that really want a stronger challenge want it as well. And also, as Jim said, we wanted to keep the two-to-five area and the five-to-12 area separate. So we created the Activo Bambino in the two-to-five area with its own swing set and a couple of spring rockers and a digger there. The whole five-to-12 area, we have, you don't see as much decks as you see in, in proposals in the past. And we did that for a reason. We wanted to create separate, different pods for all the kids to be able to play of all ages, and mom and dads. And we also wanted to try some, incorporating some health equipment. So we have a couple of what we call free runners, where people can just sit and run on. And we also have an elliptical that's gonna be there as well. And as Jim said, the whole thing will be engineered with fiber, so mom and dad don't have to clean out P-Rod from the kids when they leave the park. But it's, it's kind of a destination playground, as you guys know. And we feel with the centerpiece there, it will bring and draw people from even other communities. Few of these components are, they're nowhere else in town, so it's really gonna be unique to Richfield.
What's the timeline?
The, for the equipment?
Well, yeah, for installation equipment and up and running, because it says this year, as we read our council summary.
We are, we are planning on having the equipment shipped by the first weekend in September, and installation by October 15th.
So we'll have a ribbon cutting where the council could kind of try it out first? I mean, I want to make sure that zip line works.
We would like, Madam Mayor, to do the track ride first, for zip line.
I, I see one of our commission members is here. Carolyn, do you have any, any comments from the commission? Wonderful.
And I just wanted to, now, Jim, I think you said at the, at the commission meeting that, that if there were some specific equipment, play equipment that we didn't want, we could change it for something else, so that, so that we can kind of tailor it to, to our needs.
Yes, specifically, we were talking about the adult fitness equipment. We wanted to kind of upgrade from what the original proposal was, and Matt and I were able to do that. We were able to substitute some of the, like, the chin-up bar with something a little, a little more fancy with regards to exercise equipment, elliptical piece. So we're happy about that. So we've already, we've already kind of negotiated that.
Good.
Wonderful. Great.
Good job.
And the price stayed the same.
That's even better. We like that. Any, council, anything else?
No, I just thank Matt for willing to work with us.
Lovely, lovely. So at this time...
I have a comment. I was on the Community Services when the last one went in 25 years ago. And that was then state-of-the-art. So I can't imagine what it's gonna be in another 25 years.
Amazing, amazing. It's a big line to the moon. So I will make a motion for consideration of award of a contract to Midwest Playscapes, Inc. to replace the play equipment at Veterans Memorial Park in the amount of $150,000.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We have the city managers report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. You know, typically, I don't have a report, just because, as you well know, I, I report stuff through, through emails and through, through council memos. But just a couple of quick things. Just a reminder to the public that we're not gonna have that first meeting of the city council in August. So no, this is the last city council meeting until the, until the second Tuesday, or the, yeah, the fourth Tuesday of August, regular city council meeting, because there won't be that first one. And just one other thing that I've been kind of anxiously awaiting. I've been, been checking on the, the paving of Richfield Parkway, because I'm so excited about getting that done. So I've been there several times, and I think we're down to about the last seven to 10 days when the first lift of the blacktop will be on Richfield Parkway. And of course, people will be able to drive on it once the first lift is down. So that, that's gonna happen unless there's some, you know, weather catastrophe, probably within the next seven to 10 days. And that's gonna be exciting. We've worked for so long to have that street, so I'm excited about it.
That's wonderful. Claims and payroll?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Seeing no other business, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.